Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the work session for June 16th, 2021, Warren County School Board. First thing on the agenda tonight is accept or modify the agendas written.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the agenda as presented to us.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I recommend that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, hearing none, motion carries. Action agenda. Introduction and appointment of the principal of non-traditional programs. Dr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. I would like to recommend to the board for appointment for as the principal of our non-traditional programs for starting July 1st, 2021, Ms. Randa Vernaza. Ms. Vernaza has a wealth of experience and has served as a teacher, dean of students, and assistant principal during her 17 years in education. Ms. Vernaza is currently the assistant principal at Warren County High School, where she has served for the past six years. Her extensive preparation throughout her career makes her the best choice for this position. Ms. Vernaza is a dedicated professional who looks forward to providing a rigorous, engaging academic program structured to respond to social, emotional, and academic needs of every student. She and her family are excited about the opportunity to help shape the future of all Warren County public school students because, as you know, this facility serves every single traditional building within our system. So it is my recommendation to the board for Ms. Vernaza to be the principal of our non-traditional programs.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Warren County School Board approve the appointment of Ms. Randa Vernaza as the principal of non-traditional programs effective July 1st, 2021.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you, Dr. Ballinger, and thank you, members of the board, for giving me this opportunity. I look forward to working with the staff, students, and their families to provide opportunities and the supports that the special populations of students need to be successful. I would also like to thank my mentor, Principal Ernestine Jordan. For the past nine years, I've had the privilege of learning from her and gaining the skills necessary to help me be successful in my new position. Thank you, Mrs. Jordan. Thank you, board. Appreciate that.
Introduction and appointment of the assistant superintendent for administration,
At this time, I would like to recommend to the board, Mr. George Buck Smith, Jr., as the next assistant superintendent for administration, beginning July 1st, 2021. Mr. Smith has a wealth of experience and has served as a teacher, athletic director, director of activities, director of administrative support, and for the last 11 years, as the director of personnel. Mr. Smith has over 28 years of professional experience in public education. His extensive preparation throughout his career makes him the best choice for this position. Mr. Smith is a dedicated professional and a proud member of Warren County Public Schools' community for the last 20 years. He believes in the motto of "service to others." Mr. Smith earned his bachelor's degree from Eastern Mennonite University and his master's degree from James Madison University. He and his family are excited about this opportunity to help shape the future of the entire Warren County Public School community, and it is my pleasure to recommend Mr. George Buck Smith, Jr., as the next assistant superintendent for administration.
The Warren County School Board approve the appointment of Mr. George Buck Smith, as assistant superintendent for administration.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you all. I would also like to thank the committee and Dr. Ballinger for his trust and for yourself, for your trust in me in this position. Twenty-some years ago, when I came here with all these different ideas of things that I'd like to see happen out in the field and in the classroom and those type of things, I really didn't envision this part of the journey and those type of things. But somewhere along the way with the journey, I really fell in love with the community and the school division and those type of things, and it's been a privilege to serve over the last 20 years here. It's been a wonderful opportunity to meet and greet and get to know this community and the people of this community, and I hope to some degree that I can continue to have the impact that I've been fortunate enough to have in the last 20 years here and those type of things. But I'd like to say that I think perhaps the impact has been greater upon myself, of the people here and those type of things. So I look forward to continuing to serve, and thank you so much.
Second reading and approval of Warren County Public Schools' Virtual Academy Handbook and Guidelines. Dr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The COVID-19 pandemic has caused school divisions to evaluate educational delivery methods. As part of this evaluation, Warren County Public Schools recognizes the need for a virtual component within the school system. The attached handbook outlines the programs and requirements for students wishing to attend Warren County Public Schools through the Virtual Academy. The Virtual Academy will focus on students in grades three through 12. Students must meet residency requirements as well as eligibility requirements and must go through an application process. Classes will be limited to 20 students per grade at the elementary level, and classes at the secondary level will be based on student need and student enrollment. Our CTE and dual enrollment classes will be available as well. Virtual students will be eligible for a high school diploma from one of our two high schools. And this is the second reading, and we did post this on our website to gather input from our community, and I did share that out to the board last week as far as some of the responses, and I did want to address some of the questions that came from that. I know that some parents ask, is there an application process? Yes, there is. This is not just open to everyone. There is an application process, and we will have a team that will evaluate those applications and make a recommendation for placement in the Virtual Academy. We do have limited seats, so we are keeping it confined at this point in time because this is a new program for us. We want to make sure that we put the best product out there, and so we cannot grow too large too fast. Also, throughout our testing, you know, my plan was to give a report to the board tonight on some of our SOL results, but not all of our tests are complete, and I really want to give that when all of our tests have been completed. But I can tell you right now that, you know, we're seeing that this is a reason to keep our seats limited. There is a reason because from what I'm seeing from some of our results from our SOLs is that we didn't do as good a job. We knew we were going to be challenged this year, but there were a few more challenges than what we thought that we were facing, so seats will be limited. There were some questions about, you know, can my student take two classes in person and two classes virtual? The answer is no. There are some classes that we will be able to do that with, but in general, if you're in the school building, so if you are at Warren County High School and you are enrolled as a junior there, you're taking your classes virtual, you are either virtual or you are in person. Now, the only way that a virtual student can take classes that are virtual and some that are in person is that if they're taking CTE classes or if you need to come in for a biology lab. If you're a virtual student and we need you to come in for that lab or for that assessment, then you have to come in for that assessment, but we are not going to allow students to take two classes, the first, you know, half of the day in person and the other two classes virtual. You know, we need to be able to manage this as well, but if a student is fully virtual and they want to take building trades or electricity or, you know, if those are hands-on and they need to be in that facility for the instruction to occur, to have the hands-on activity, those students will be coming and taking those courses. Also banned, so if we have banned, so there are, and they're noted in the handbook what classes we have designated as in-person-only classes, that we are not going to offer them virtually. So we will not offer our CTE classes virtual because that is very tough to do, and so those classes will allow those students to come in. There was also some questions about what is full-time? So an elementary full-time would, or actually part-time. So part-time would be you have to take two units, so that would be English and math. Those are two full units. That would designate part-time. Where PE and, say, art, they're not full units, so they would only be probably a third or a quarter or something of that nature of a unit, so it would not constitute part-time. Now, at the high school, that would be two classes, so on a four-by-four, they take two classes, they're part-time. Now, if they're to be designated as a full-time student, they would at least have to take three. So those were some of the questions that I noted as needing to address as far as the response from our community members, and I wanted to address those tonight as far as when we talk about this. Now, I did ask, I know this is our second reading, and I'm going to ask the board if we can approve this because we really need to get our application out there. We need to start that process. We're waiting on the final approval from the board on our handbook and for the program for us to release that open so we can start that process.
Anyone have any questions for Dr. Ballinger? Yeah, I mean, I think it's been well worked, so.
I would move that approval be given to establish the Warren County Public Schools' Virtual Academy, beginning with the 2021-2022 school year, and that the proposed Warren County Public Schools' Virtual Academy Handbook be approved as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, hearing none, motion carries. Acceptance of donation, Dr. Ballinger.
There's an approval of stipends for coordinators, Dr. Ballinger.
Oh, yeah. Approval of stipends for coordinators of the Virtual Academy, Dr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sorry for the oversight.
Warren County Public Schools will be, you just established the Virtual Academy for the 2021 school year. The academy will serve both elementary and secondary students. A coordinator for each will be necessary in order to organize and facilitate the delivery of this program. This coordination will be in addition to the duties of the assigned individual, and so this is a new role, and most administrators can tell you that this year has been a challenging year with the virtual component and the constant communication that has to go into working with families and scheduling and, you know, there is a challenge. And so with this new role, I am asking that the board approve a $5,000 stipend for our elementary designation, which would be the principal at E. Wilson Morrison, and then for the principal that will take care of our secondary, which is our six through 12, and that would be the principal of our non-traditional programs, because that is an extra duty beyond what they are going to be doing within the scope of their normal day. So any questions as far as, anyone have anything to talk about?
What's involved in that duty?
So it's, one, there's going to be a lot of keeping, making sure students are on track, a lot of phone calls, home visits if necessary. Within our academy, if students are not on track, then that administrator needs to make the decision to remove that student from the Virtual Academy and put them into a traditional school building. You also have to, with, for instance, with our high school, you may have teachers at three different schools, and so coordinating and communicating with those teachers and checking up on their lesson plans and watching the delivery of their instruction and still doing the job as a principal, and I'm sure I'm missing some things that principals had to do this year and assistant principals this year when working through the Virtual Academy or through virtual instruction this year. So it is time-consuming, and it is an increased responsibility, and it's going to take a little bit more time.
So the teachers are still responsible for making sure the students show up and complete work, getting that information to coordinate?
That is correct. Yes, ma'am.
It just seems to add a lot more follow-up later, and you may, like you said, you may end up doing home visits and making tough decisions or getting students back on track. So it is going to take a lot of extra time. It's going to be a lot of follow-up, I think.
Dr. Ballinger, will the coordinator be able to log on and observe the course being taught?
Yes, so most of the time, what you see is the teacher will have a canvas or, say, at the secondary school, they'll have their canvas site with the link, and what administrators did this year is they asked teachers to share that link with them so that at any point in time, they could log on and jump onto those meets because they could do an evaluation, just see what's going on with instruction, check on students. If there's been a student that hasn't been on a meet in a while and that principal or coordinator is wanting to follow up to check on that meet for that day, they can do that. So yes, sir, they can actually jump in, because really, when you do your teacher evaluations, you're going to have to jump in on that meeting to do a teacher evaluation, and that would be another piece of that, that you still have to evaluate, the virtual teachers, and so that component will fall to the coordinator, which will be a principal at those designated schools, and also doing that role.
Anything else for Dr. Ballinger? Would I raise a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Warren County School Board approve a $5,000 stipend for the elementary Virtual Academy coordinator and a $5,000 stipend for the secondary Virtual Academy coordinator to the grade 27 salary scale effective July 1st, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, hearing none, motion carries. Now, acceptance of donation, Dr. Ballinger.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I recommend that the board accept the donation with gratitude of $240 that was given to Skyline Middle School FFA by Ms. Stacy Swain.
I move that the donation of $240 to the Skyline Middle School FFA program by Ms. Stacy Swain be accepted with gratitude.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, hearing none, motion carries. Approval for the addition of three elementary Virtual Academy teachers, Ms. Rudesell.
Good evening. In preparation for establishing the Warren County Public Schools' Virtual Academy, feedback from a committee of elementary school teachers and principals was sought. The determination was made that dedicating full-time elementary teachers to the virtual program was the most effective model for providing instruction to elementary students in a virtual environment. We are requesting the addition of one-third, one-fourth, and one-fifth grade teacher to provide full-time instruction as part of the elementary Virtual Academy. Any questions?
How many have been received? Have started to?
Yes. Surveys have been done of both our homeschool families and our existing families, so there is definitely a level of interest. Now, I mean, to be completely honest and transparent, until we have applications that begin to come in, we will not know for sure, you know, what, how many students we'll have. I know that Dr. Ballinger has been very interested in growing the program, so while we may not have many families to begin with, I'm hoping that we do have plenty. Establishing the program and offering a high-quality program is going to be important if we are able to grow that program in the future.
About 20 students?
Yes, per class.
So if we get more, will the non-traditional teachers?
If we get, that's why there's the application process. So no one will be guaranteed a spot in the virtual program. So we have a deadline set for those applications, which, off the top of my head, I cannot remember, it's coming up relatively quickly so that we can plan and make sure we have in place what we need. A committee will review those applications, and one of the things that we will take a close look at is if a child was participating in a virtual environment this past school year or this school year, we want to make sure that they were successful in that environment. So we'll review applications, and 20 is what we will cap the registrations at.
Now, if we hire these additional teachers, do we have, don't get a class, or do we have any students who are not used to making the virtual class, or will we have additional teachers?
I feel like I need to defer that question to Dr. Ballinger.
We have plenty of need right now within our division for remediation and for working with students on a one-on-one basis, and so it would be easy to transition a position into a remediation role within a school of need that we've noticed that our reports, our SOL data and our other data is showing us that we have a gap there that we have, we're going to see these learning gaps. It's going to take us two to three years to get us back where we need to be, and that's just across the country. So there is a need because we also have grants out there. For instance, there's a Learns grant through the Virginia Department of Education that we're seeking funds for, for social, emotional support, for remediation support. We also are utilizing our own CARES funds. We have 1.3, almost $1.4 million that we will also be utilizing for grant positions. So, you know, we have a need because we also have other spots that we're trying to, or other programs that we're wanting to implement and bring in.
Do we have the funds for these teachers?
Yes. Yes, because one of the things would also be, so as we'll talk about later with restructuring within central office, you have funds from restructuring that will allow to help cover this as well, but also we have planned on utilizing our CARES funds. This is one of those things that CARES funds can be used for, to offer virtual instruction, so we have those funds available there as well.
We need to plan for, we're going to have 20 students. I truly believe you will at each grade, so, and I know we've talked in the past about the CARES money would cover remediation or whatever we needed to do, so let's put the plan in place, and, you know, if we fall short of 20, that's okay, in my opinion, but we were ready for it, and there's nothing worse than to throw a program out and not be prepared for it. So I say personally, as, you know, looking forward, we need to move forward with it.
And if we are going to embark in a virtual academy, I know that some of the feedback that you as board members heard over the course of the past year and over the past year was that hybrid instruction for students was difficult, both for the students and for the classroom teachers. So when our elementary teachers met with us, that was really one of the primary, one of their primary concerns and considerations was just the being able to pay an equal amount of attention to those, their virtual students while still having in-person students in front of them. So for this age level, it really is the most effective. So if we are, if we want to embark on this and we want to make it successful right out of the gate, then I think that is, you know, certainly the model that is going to be most positively impactful for our elementary school students.
And you're not going to see secondary on there. Secondary, those would be brought to you as, because from that group, they wanted their, to be paid during the day, so using their planning period. So they wanted to do it within the school day and where the elementary thought that it needed to be a designation. So as we develop our secondary, we would be bringing to the board to approve, you know, certain teachers that are teaching, that we have enough to make a class to pay for, you know, for their planning period or for X dollars for them to teach that virtual class. So that's why you're only seeing elementary now because secondary teachers wanted a different model, and so we're trying to do what is best for elementary and secondary to make this the best model possible. And I can tell you, as far as in our area, Warren County Public Schools and Falkir County Public Schools are really the only two schools that are near us that are doing their own Virtual Academy. Everybody else will be utilizing Virtual Virginia, and with high school, we can still utilize some of Virtual Virginia if we have enough, or say we don't have enough students to make a class, we can actually utilize Virtual Virginia to help offset that without incurring additional costs for us for those students. But we want to, again, as Mrs. Rudesell said, we want to make sure that our program is very robust, and we want to make sure that our program is viable on down the road because virtual education's not going away. Colleges and universities have been doing it for a long time. Secondary schools, elementary, public school systems, we're behind the eight ball in that. We're behind, we're not in the game. There is a lot of programs out there that offer good quality programs. We need to, you know, my goal is, we are a service-learning organization. We provide a service to our community, and whether those students go to school within our school system or they're not, they're still students and residents of Warren County, and I want to make sure that we're doing the best job that we can to support all of the students in Warren County Public, Warren County Public Schools.
It also provides opportunity for extracurricular activities for these kids, drama, athletics, band, you know, whatever. So it's more than just their education, and the extracurricular stuff is part of their education, so the homeschoolers are missing that. So I'm excited about this program.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I move that one-third, one-fourth, and one-fifth grade teaching position be added to provide instruction for elementary students participating in the Warren County Public Schools' Virtual Academy.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Rudesell.
You're welcome.
But hang tight, you got another one.
Can I get a minute?
My question is, what is one-third, one-fourth, and one-fifth?
Of a teacher.
Does it end up a whole number?
It ends one whole teacher, I'm sure.
I just, sorry, I just.
I thought the same.
All right. Approval of Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV grants. Ms. Rudesell, please.
All right. We are requesting board approval this evening for the submission to VDOE of the divisions' Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV grants as presented at the June 2nd, 2021 school board meeting. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the 2021-2022 Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV grants be approved as presented, submissions to the Virginia Department of Education.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Rudesell.
Thank you.
Schedule a fiscal year closeout meeting. Mr. Valentine.
Good evening. While the weather may not feel like it, New Year's Eve and New Year's Day is rapidly approaching. That is for our fiscal year, not our calendar year, June 30th and then July 1st, but that's a important date for us here in the finance group anyway. In the past, several methods have been used to approve a final payment of bills for the fiscal year. Two ways that are possible of doing that would be to schedule a special meeting to be held on Wednesday, June 30th, or another acceptable date that week and an acceptable time to you. We used to call that, or would still call that, a closeout meeting where you would approve a final payment of bills and maybe any other actions, personnel or whatever that you need to do to sort of close out the year. Or you could do, as you've done probably the last four or five years anyway, pass a resolution authorizing the superintendent to approve the final payment of bills on June 30th, and then that would be presented to you at your first meeting of the new fiscal year, which would be July 7th. It would be after the fact, and it's similar to what you do during the months of July and December where you don't have a second meeting in those months. You've already passed a resolution allowing You've already passed a resolution allowing us this year to do that. One footnote, and I don't know that it's still pertinent, or maybe it is, is that if you would decide to hold a special meeting for this purpose, there is also that process of selecting an architect firm for the renovation of LFK or the LFK and Publicity Tech Projects. And it's possible that maybe you could interview those architect perspective, architect firms at that meeting if you were so inclined to do so.
It's a pleasure of the board.
We'll be out of town at that meeting. But other than that, we'll go about resolution. We're going to have to have a meeting to interview this anyhow.
Right. You can either do the architects at that meeting or the, or in July.
If, if that doesn't put us off too far, I'd do a resolution then.
I'd, I'd do the resolution. I mean, because you see the numbers anyway, they're following the meeting.
Right.
And usually it's not many bills, if I remember correctly, Mr. Valentine.
It's not a terrible amount, but there are, there are those last minute ones. It's basically any that we collected from several days ago when we published the report that you approved tonight.
Right.
Up until June 30th, we do want to pay as many as we can.
Oh, absolutely.
There probably will be a couple rather large ones. Our school buses, we need to pay for them this year. Some of the projects that Mr. Libsie's working on.
Right.
We will need to pay for. So there we have, maybe not in a number of invoices, but in the size of some of them.
Right.
All things that you've previously approved.
But yeah, the buses were all approved several months ago.
And these projects have all been approved.
And the Libsie's projects were all approved, so we have a motion for it.
I move that, that the resolution authorizing the superintendent to approve a final payment of bills for fiscal year 2021 be adopted as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Valentine. Spanish textbooks, Mr. Fox.
Good evening. Contention on the availability of funds. Warren County Public Schools wishes to purchase Level 1, 2, 3, and 4 Spanish textbooks for They are funds that have been returned to us and beyond that, I will return, I will defer to Mr. Valentine.
It will come from the textbook fund in a way, the only reason it says contingent, the board supervisors, as you will recall, did appropriate 300 and some thousand, 360, I think. We do the textbook fund, but it's a two-step process of accounting that even though they approved their money going there, they have to actually approve a transfer of it. I'm waiting on confirmation from the treasurer that she's received notice to go ahead and receive and make a physical transfer from their funds into our textbook fund. So if, if money is then approved, it's just we don't want to spend it or write a check out of the fund, hold the money in.
So the money's there.
It's been approved, it just hasn't physically landed in our account yet.
It's a good question.
Please, please, all, we've got several of them, all of them, all of them in review, the committees.
Yes. Yes.
And will we currently use it for Spanish textbooks? Will they all be used or?
Well, the, the best example I can give you with our Spanish textbooks is that the most recent one that it refers to cassette tapes as one of the biggest innovations.
The whole Latin?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we acquire these Spanish?
Yes, it's our most popular world language elective.
Yeah, I was looking at the quantity. It's all, all rolled out.
Yes, well, we start in the eighth grade at both middle schools. And so we're purchasing classroom sets for, at all four levels in addition to the digital copies. And it's a wonderful deal for us because the vendor allows us to reuse the digital copies. So if we have a student semester one using one digital license, in semester two, we can insert a new student.
For how?
This is for, this is.
Different than second year cycle?
This, this license is for six.
I'm ready. I move that Warren County Public Schools purchase Level 1, Level 2, Level 3, and Level 4 Spanish textbooks for $53,693.18.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, hearing none, motion carries. Next up, the Latin textbooks, Mr. Fox.
Contingent on funds. Warren County Public Schools wishes to purchase, purchase Unit 1, 2, and 3 Latin hardbound and ebooks for $8,011.36.
Same situation, all of that is the same.
Mr. Chairman, I move that Warren County Public Schools purchase Unit 1, 2, and 3 American Cambridge Latin textbooks for $8,011.36.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, hearing none, motion carries. Science textbooks, Mr. Fox.
Yes. Contingent upon funds. Warren County Public Schools would like to purchase middle school science textbooks, earth science, astronomy, and advanced placement environmental science textbooks for $266,487.94.
Have all of these levels of science courses are outdated and need to be upgraded?
In many cases, at least at the middle school, there is no, going back to when I was the principal, we were using our own digital textbook because the, the textbook was that old and that outdated. They're, they're very, very old textbooks, yes. And in some cases, there was no textbook.
That's what I, I work on. I know we spent a lot on textbooks this, this past year. But the reality is, we had to have. I mean, we owe it to the teachers and the students. So, and we hadn't really purchased many books over the last few years.
It's been several years.
Over the last few years.
Probably this is the first year I was principal of Warren County Public Schools, the last purchase I recall for a middle school.
It's pay me now or pay me later, so.
That's the same with the buses.
Yeah, same with the buses. Same difference. So we have a motion.
I'll tell you what, I'll make that up for you.
Okay.
It's a lot of money, so.
We did.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Warren County Public Schools purchase STEM Scopes Middle School Textbooks, Earth Science, Astronomy, and AP Environmental Science Textbooks
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, hearing none, motion carries.
We got another question. Where, where will that put us in subject matter in textbooks?
Well, I believe that will cover every core, every, every core course that we have, K through 12, with the exception, we, we are short on some history books, but we could not come to consensus at the secondary level on history books.
What is probably the typical lifespan of textbook? How many years? Bro, I mean, say back, how long do you have?
Well, I can tell you that the, the calculus book that we've been using is 24 years old.
Okay, let's go to science.
Mr. Williams, I, I would have to venture a guess, but I, I would say 10 years would be the upper limits of how long it could.
And the Virginia Department of Education has a cycle that every six, every seven years, they redo the standards.
Okay.
And so every seven years, publishers have to review the Virginia Department of Education standards for that subject area and make sure that their textbooks in the curriculum are updated. And so if you miss a cycle, then you miss an update.
Yes.
And if you miss two cycles, you've missed, you've missed two updates. And so a lot of times what these textbooks companies are doing now is, of course, they will take those standards and they'll put them in there to where it's easy for the teacher to see and for the student, and so it hits on those, those, those points for the students. And so what you see is, if you get, you know, two cycles down the road, well, you're working on this standard, but now the standard you're working on, the VDOE actually took it, say for instance, if it's a seventh grade standard, they may have moved it to eighth grade. So now you're in the eighth grade and you're not, you're, that, that standard's not in that textbook, it's in the seventh grade textbook. So they jumped those standards around, but up and down that line between grade levels. So it's important every seven years that we look at it, that we evaluate it, and if we need to get that update, we need to get that update.
And we, we certainly, we adopt every seven years, but we have not purchased every seven years.
So all the books, we get the hardbound and we get the virtual, right?
Okay, typically we have purchased a classroom set of hardbound books. So they're there for the students to use while they're in the classroom, but they have the digital copy and we're one-to-one with our Chromebooks, so they can take the textbook with them wherever they go, take multiple textbooks with them wherever they go.
And it not hurt their back?
It not hurt their back. So I like the old days with the book pack.
Absolutely. The last for you, Mr. Fox, will be Mastery Connect. Connect.
Mastery Connect is a competency-based learning platform that helps teachers identify levels of understanding, target students for intervention, and inform instruction. This means that teachers have more time to teach and students have more time to learn. Warren County Public Schools would like to purchase Mastery Connect for $41,775. And this is not in your notes, but this would recognize a first-year savings of Warren County Public Schools over our current assessment platform of $33,761. And a second-year saving and thereon savings of $49,311.94 per year.
Like this program?
This program is much easier to use than the one we've had for the past two years. The, the program over the past two years was so difficult that many of our teachers were unable to, to use it. We had specialists that trained, they trained and trained and trained just to get our benchmarks out, and we were able to make that part of the assessment program work, but teachers weren't able to use it to include their own tests. This has, the intervention, the opportunity for intervention is here because people will be able to give tests and find out where their students are much easi-, much more easily.
It's a, it's a lot better than that. It's, it's an easier program. When, when schools, Power School purchased Performance Matters and they, they purchased what was, I believe it was an interactive achievement. And so they, they replaced a program that people loved to use, which is like Mastery Connect, with this program that was just so difficult. And when they tried to migrate all your data over, so you had teachers that maybe they, they've taught for 20 years and on, on, on the previous platform through Power School, they had 20 years of assessments that they, and tests that they had created on this digital platform. When they migrated it over, they lost it all. And, and the, just the, the interface with it, trying to give those assessments and the headaches, that it's, it's really not worth the, the ninety-some thousand dollars that, and, and basically our hands were tied with, you either use this because we're taking this one away from you. And so schools were put a couple of years ago on short notice of trying to find something. And it was just a nightmare all across the Commonwealth in, in migration. Now, they did come back and try to really help schools and try to offer additional support, but teachers just did not get on board with utilizing this program. This Mastery Connect, they will be on board with utilizing that program and it'll make their job a lot easier. It'll also help in our virtual academy. So, so that piece of it, it's, it's going to be used.
And to add to that, they provide training for each of our faculties and it provides specialist training for each of the TICs at each of the schools. So the, the training component itself is, is much preferred over, over what we've had over the last two years.
How familiar is it? Is it easy to use or why do you use it?
It is so, you and I could use it, Mr. Williams.
Wow, that's a lot of books. Any questions for Mr. Fox? Have a motion.
I move that the Warren County Public Schools purchase Mastery Connect as their competency-based learning and assessment platform for the 2021, 2022 school year at a cost of $41,775.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Fox. Next, the second reading and discussion, May 2021, VSPA School Board Policy Updates. Ms. Shepherd, please.
Thank you. In May 2021, VSPA submitted 45 policies for consideration by the Warren County School Board. A chart showing all of the updated policies has been prepared by staff members noting the proposed changes. An additional three policies are presented for review but have no recommended revisions. The first reading was at the last School Board meeting on June 2nd. Tonight is a time for an opportunity to discuss the policy changes and recommendations for approval will be at the July 7th meeting. Be happy to answer any questions, and we have most of the experts in this room that can help me do that.
All right. Great.
Thank you. My presentation was much shorter than Mr. Fox's.
Yes, it was. Warren County Public Schools bus stop review and recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we, I asked our transportation director to, to look at our, we had an opportunity this year because of situations that have, have been brought forth through the county and, and, you know, we had to lose, we lost our, a bus stop, and so we had to make a, a temporary change till we found a solution and, and, you know, we, we wanted to evaluate everything. And so it gave us opportunity to also not just evaluate one bus stop, but, but to look at all of our bus stops, and we're going to continue to look at those as we move forward. But when we look at our bus stops and in particular, the, the proposals as far as looking at what would be best for the county moving forward, in particular, and looking at, for instance, Apple Mountain, we, I went with Mr. Mitchell one day and we, we went and turned, you know, took the route of one of the proposed routes and looking at the roads and looking at, at proposed stops and looking at blind corners and it just, you know, there, there's so many things that we have to take into consideration when we are going on a road into an area and we, we noticed that just on, on the drive, not being a school bus, but in a, in a truck, the regular pickup vehicle, in, on that drive, there, there were areas of, of a lot of concern that, you know, this corner's too sharp, this, the road's not wide enough here, the bus, you know, the, the stop does not provide places for students to stand, you know, just, just different things that we were trying to evaluate to look to see, is this a feasible solution for us to, to allow this to happen in order to move forward? And, you know, some other things that we had to take into consideration is that, one, we, we reached out to, to the sheriff's office and, and I'm going to go ahead and ask Mr. Mitchell if he wants to come up in case I, I miss anything here on some particulars. So I'd hate to put you on the spot, but, you know, when it comes to, to law enforcement on, on private property, the sheriff's office said that there's only really a couple of things that, that they can do with, with enforcement and laws. And please correct me if I miss anything or, or misstate anything through our conversations. That, one, is that with regards to motor vehicles on private property, the sheriff's office can only enforce two laws. These two are DUI and reckless driving. Subsequently, Virginia codes regarding school bus safety are not enforceable on private property. Examples of this would be trespass upon church or school property, including on a school bus, or passing a stopped school bus when the stoplights are out. So, so there's, there's things that, that cause for concern because our, safety is our main priority to make sure that we are allowing a safe stop for our students. So when we, when we're researching that and getting that information from, from the sheriff's department, you know, that is, that is of a Department, you know, that is, that is of a big concern, that if we're on private property and, you know, we have our stop sign out and students are loading and people are continuing to drive by our bus, you know, that is a big concern. So that was one of the things that we really looked at too, not just the width of the road as we were driving, you know, driving through there. There were some turns that, you know, I noted to Mr. Mitchell, I said, whoa, the bus is gonna take up the entire road right here. If there's a car coming, we're gonna, there's gonna be an accident, just because of the length of the school bus and how those roads would wind in some areas that it was cause for concern. We could have additional damages in going in. Then the questions came up, well, what would be the liability on the school? You know, if we have an accident out there and the Sheriff's Department says that, you know, this is an area that they can't enforce anything, what, you know, how are we gonna protect our students? You know, is this something that's gonna put us in a liable situation by going onto private property? And then again, as we're looking at that, it, looking at the, whether it was the snow removal, when you're up in an area that, you know, does not have VDOT coming in and scraping the roads for you, are those roads gonna be ready for us and are they gonna meet our requirements when we go to take a bus up? Aaron and I spend a lot of phone, a lot of time on the phone, we're best friends in the wintertime.
Aaron did you?
And we're talking at night, we're talking at four o'clock in the morning, we're talking all the time. And, you know, it's, those are tough calls to make. As a superintendent, I've always said, the toughest decision a superintendent ever has to make is whether to call school off or to make sure, or to bring kids to school on a snow day, because you put lives at danger and that is a very tough call to make. And so we wanted to make sure that if we commit to something, are we gonna be able to continue to maintain that? Then what about the liability also of the road? You know, if it's on private property and school buses, how much does a school bus weigh?
Roughly? You're talking twenty-six thousand pounds?
So multiple trips over multiple times starts beating down on a road, is the school gonna be liable for fixing that road? So as we go through and look at all this stuff, there becomes, you know, it starts to paint a picture of what is our liability and what is the safest bet for us? And so, you know, the recommendation is that, you know, that we not go onto private property or private subdivisions and that we stay on VDOT maintained roads, just because we know that, we know the specifications for those roads, we know that, one, if we can pick a spot with a line of sight, there's a lot of things that goes into selecting a stop. So we wanted, we wanted to say, we're gonna just stay on a VDOT maintained road, but, and that's why I'm providing a regulation that kind of gives some outlines, that if things can be met, then, you know, through, through the evaluation of the Transportation Director and myself and then the School Board, then we may consider. But those things are, and if you don't mind, I will just kind of mention those, that, one, the Transportation Department is authorized to consider entering privately maintained roads for the purpose of transporting students where the following conditions exist. One, the subdivision shall be in full compliance with county subdivision ordinances and shall have a validity constituted Property Owners Association fully authorized to act on behalf of the Property Owners Association. If the roads in the subdivision are constructed up to VDOT standards, even though the roads have remained private, school bus service may be supplied without further inquiry as to the quality of the design and construction of the roads. The number of students to be transported is justified. Student safety is not jeopardized in the event of the safety hazards involving weather, road deterioration, et cetera. Division school buses shall not travel in the established bus routes during the period of time. Students will be picked up at the pre-arranged bus stop near the entrance or at a designated stop and deposited there in the afternoon. It is further understood that on days of inclement weather, the bus driver shall have the empowerment to refuse to travel roads that have not been cleared of ice or snow and students must meet the bus at the nearest public road turnaround. Another one, if the roads in the subdivision designated by the Transportation Department as bus routes have not been constructed up to VDOT standards, then the burden shall be upon the Property Owners Association to present such evidence, including engineering data, that is convincing to the Board to provide school bus service in the subdivision. In reaching its decision, the Board shall consider that the road instructed shall be in compliance with VDOT specifications, which mean at minimum the following: pavement depth and width, shoulder width, signage, speed, stop, intersection geometry, sight distance, cul-de-sac adequate ingress and egress, maximum vertical grades. An application to the Board is accompanied with the current, within the previous 12 months. VDOT survey or study of the road by certified engineers shall be considered by the Director of Pupil Transportation before July 1 of any year. Obtain a policy of liability insurance showing the Board and its employees as additional insured. The limit of liability shall be at least as much as the Board carries to cover similar liability. A copy of the policy shall be submitted before the transportation service, before transportation service is provided. And the Property Owners Association shall be, shall by written agreement, fully indemnify and hold harmless the Board for any loss the road or any of its employees may sustain. By reason of such action they reasonably perform in providing transportation in the subdivision, further, the Property Owners Association shall waive all claims it may have now or in the future against the Board for damages to its property or that of property owners. The agreement shall meet all requirements of the form and substance as may be required by the attorney for the Board. It is understood that the priorities shall be given to students meeting the buses on public roads in the event that the shortage, in the event that a shortage of school buses develops. Allow access to all vehicles for such necessary purposes as investigating accidents, checking road conditions, et cetera, providing for snow removal consistent with that, provided on public roads. Continue to maintain the private road in compliance with this policy. In newly established subdivisions, service shall not be provided until construction is substantially complete. And finally, service in any, service in any private road shall be terminated at any time for reasonable cause as determined by the Director of Pupil Transportation. And so that kind of gives us some guidelines that really kind of follow, that, one, protects us and also at the same time protects the subdivision or property owner. By making sure that roads are meet, that meet specifications, then we know, Mr. Mitchell would know, that his buses are gonna be fine, that they're not gonna slide off a road and then off into a ditch and go down a hill, because at this point, the road is narrower here than it is up at the top. And so it puts us also to make sure that we're not held liable for any damage to road and upkeep, because, you know, as a, as a member of a POA, you pay your dues to help maintain roads and now there's a school bus driving on that road. And so then, you know, there may be a situation where people do not want to continue to pay for that and then now we have to come up with another plan on down the road. So there's a lot of things that we just thought that, one, that I thought that we needed to look at and make sure to protect the Board and to protect the school system in looking at where to designate a bus stop.
The most interesting thing to me is I had no idea that if you were in a private subdivision in any county in the Commonwealth and you passed a school bus with its lights on, that you couldn't receive a ticket. That's, that's mind-boggling to me. I mean, it really is, when you think about it, I mean, that's just.
That's what we're pointing out as well, that there are also VDOT roads that we don't approve stops. Just our primary focus is student safety and if we feel that compromises that, that we're not, we don't have our site, it's larger or something, we don't do it. I mean, it's, it's snake road.
Snake road, yes.
I mean, that's been, that's been a challenge for us in the past. We don't stop there. We don't and we can't.
I like dropping down on 340, that whole section there, but you didn't care what?
They're challenged, it's a challenging section for us when we're trying to set stops.
The reality is, it's the safety of the children in that crossroad. That's the reality.
Yes.
We always have to do that mile. That's.
That's our number one.
And we want to protect it because if the children did do anything to be injured, it's something that's negative of the crossroads in that area. I think it's a well-read, kind of covers everybody, so, and gives us some opportunities also.
Right, if a subdivision wants, if they can meet all those guidelines, then we can definitely, you know, evaluate that and look at providing that, because I, you know, I know Mr. Mitchell loves to find great bus stops and so if there is an opportunity to meet a guideline, to provide something that we feel meet these standards and that we are also protected as a school division, then we will, we will consider that, absolutely. Any other questions?
Did you travel Dismal Hollow Road?
Not today.
Because I was wondering, are they gonna close Happy Creek, I think the 19th?
Yeah.
The buses coming out of Shandor Farms, the only way they can get back out is this one, are they gonna be going that way? Yeah, but if the project's delayed, then we could run into some problems in August.
We're hoping it's not, but if we have to travel, and that's another tricky red person. We actually do have options. Sometimes, I can email if you want some good examples of some creative things we've done where, on that one really sharp turn at the pond, there's what, five houses? And we were able to work with the neighbors in the community to come up with a mutual spot while it's on the turn, we still have over 200 feet of sight distance in both ways. So everybody kind of compromised and that's, sometimes, you know, when you're in a challenging topography and challenging twisty roads, that's what it takes, is a community working together for a solution for students and we're blessed to be in a community that does that.
They're supposed to be, they're not done now on Happy Creek. I mean, they've been moving right along and I think if we have to have our buses travel to Dismal Hollow, I think if we reached out, Dr. Ballinger, or you, Mr. Mitchell, to the Sheriff's Department for the morning time and evening time, I bet they'd have a deputy kind of just riding back and forth.
We need to have an ally, a sheriff.
Yeah, so, you know, that would, that may help curtail any issues that we may see.
That was one of the reasons we moved, one of the reasons that we moved the start school back, so that we could hopefully give them enough time to finish their project.
You've got summer school starting right after school, so, you know, you might be faced with this a little early.
Are these on the website and folks can take a look at them?
They're not on the website right now, this is a regulation, so, you know, it will be added to our, our policy book, so our policy experts back there in the back, so, so as soon as, you know, I was wanting to present to you the regulation that I am proposing, so that we can move forward and get that posted to our website within our policy management action. And there's really no motion needed, you know, no, there, I mean, because the regulation is just me informing the Board of the regulation. So, you know, and then the discussion on, on the review and my recommendation for how to establish and looking at private roads. So there's really no recommendation, no approval from the Board needed. That is correct, right, Ms. Shepherd?
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
Just wanted to make sure. Yeah, no, we're good. That way I'm informing the Board of the regulation.
And I would just like to say to the folks at Apple Mountain, this is not aimed at a reason not to create a route up there or anything, it just brought up a lot of weaknesses in our, in our policies and in our regulations that needed to be addressed, that we didn't realize, some of these things, particularly some of the private property sheriffs, regulation things and that kind of.
Yeah, it was eye-opening.
And the liability aspect happened as well.
Yeah, for everyone.
That's it, all right.
That's my report, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Ballinger. Information on regulation revisions, Ms. Shepherd?
This is just what Dr. Ballinger was talking about. Policy BFC, policy adoption requires all changes to regulation be presented to the School Board as information items. Revisions have been made to the following regulations and forms: IICA-R, Student Trip Guidelines, JC-R1, Student Zone Transfer Request, JC-F1, Student Zone Transfer Request Form, JCF2, Student Zone Transfer Verification of Childcare Form, and JCF3, Student Zone Transfer, Transfer Student Health Form. IICA-R, Student Trip Guidelines. Revisions include School Board approval of overnight trips. The Superintendent will recommend approval of overnight trips at the First September and First February School Board meeting each year. Evaluation criteria of overnight field trips include educational value, age and maturity of group, number of students involved, itinerary, number of chaperones, including teachers and parents, and approval of the teacher and the school principal. JC-R1, Student Zone Transfer Request. This is a regulation that we've been working on for the spring semester. Several principals and staff have been involved in the recommendations of this regulation and the forms attached. So the new regulation to outline student zone transfer requests, the regulation outlines acceptable reasons for student zone transfer requests. The regulation includes the zone request perimeters, process, and timelines. The process will remain the same for the upcoming 21-22 school year. The new process will start for the 22-23 school year. Form 1 is the Student Zone Transfer Request Form, which includes information regarding Virginia High School League, VHSL eligibility status for transfers. Form 2 is the Transfer Verification of Childcare Form. This form will be used when parents of children in grades kindergarten through grade eight request a zone transfer due to childcare. And then Form 3, Student Zone Transfer Student Health Form, will be used when parents request a zone transfer to meet the specific health needs of a student. So be happy to answer any question, there's no action needed on this item as it's just for information.
I treat you pretty easily.
Great, thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. Restructuring and compensation considerations, Dr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
As part of the Central Office Restructure Plan, I will be absorbing two Central Office staff positions, one Administrator and one Instructional Resource Teacher, as we move into the 22 school year. The responsibilities of the Instructional Resource Teacher position will be dispersed throughout the current staff. As part of the restructuring plan, I request that the Board approve a stipend of $2,500 to be given to those positions that will include, as part of, that will be included as part of the restructuring plan. Stipends are being recommended instead of moving individuals from the teacher pay scale to the Administrator 1 pay scale. If it is determined that the Instructional Resource position needs to be replaced, then those stipends will be pulled along with the responsibilities and returned to the current position and in field. And so as I've worked this year, looking at how we can best serve, you know, run the school division, we have now an opportunity that we did not see, you know, as far as moving into next school year, with some positions that are going to open up and we moving into next school year, with some positions that are going to open up and we can absorb those within our current staff. And when looking at that, we can actually save, just by reducing the number of central office, or people that are in the central office, we can save the division $245,000 on the budget by absorbing those positions and reallocating that, those duties to other people within, within that office. So it's streamlining and trimming in the central office as well as other places within the division, but right now this one focuses on the central office.
Which, go ahead.
I was gonna ask how many staff members will be taking on these additional responsibilities?
So we're looking at, with the total restructure, it will affect six people.
Okay, you think they can handle that additional responsibility as well as their current?
And we had a conversation, we, you know, today was another conversation, but yes, we, they feel that that can, that can be handled within their role and that, you know, yes, it's gonna put a little more on their plate, but it makes us more efficient.
And they're willing to do that.
Anything else from Dr. Ballinger? I think it's great we have people that are willing to step up and take on more responsibility and to streamline the central office. I think that's moving in the right direction.
Earlier, you know, the question was asked, how do we pay for those virtual teachers? Right there is a way to do that.
Yep, a chunk of it.
So we're taking that from administration and throwing that, we can be throwing that into instruction.
I move that a $2,500 stipend be approved for those positions that will be adding additional duties due directly to the restructuring of the central office.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Before we go into our closed meeting, I need to make a statement. The Board, Dr. Ballinger, I will be relocating, so as of tonight, this will be my last meeting. I will no longer be in the district I represent, so according to the state of Virginia, I can no longer serve on the Board. I can say I truly appreciate everybody that I've worked with on the Board, at the central office, outside of our walls with the public. It's been eye open, it's been a pleasure, sometimes it's been tough, but you know what? That's just part of it. So I wish everybody on this Board, Dr. Ballinger, Ms. Shepherd who's leaving us, the best. And I know you folks will carry on and carry forward and that's it. So let's read into a closed session, please. Thank you.
This motion is made for this open public meeting of the Warren County School Board to become a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711. The School Board desires to discuss the following matter in a closed meeting. Section 2.2-3711A1, Discussion, Consideration or Interviews of Perspective Candidates for Employment, Assignment, Appointment, Promotion, Performance, Demotion, Salaries, Disciplining or Resignation of Employees of the School Board, specifically Employee Personnel Considerations.
Roll call, Mr. Ballinger.
Mr. Bauer.
Aye.
Dr. Pence.
Aye.
Mr. Rinaldi.
Aye.
Mr. Wells.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye. We are now in closed session.